And so we're trying to make sure before we officially start the meeting that we've got everything in place. We have live video, it looks like. What we're doing now is there's going to be a scoreboard, that is how they refer to it, and basically allows the audience to see what's happening on either side of the screens, so they can actually understand where we are in the board meeting. And it'll also show in front of the individual board members. So we're just getting that in place. Because where should we see whatever those are? Can you just log into it at that site? All right. Okay, we were going to call our Citrus County School Board Special Meeting and Workshop to Order for August 27th. Before I turn it over for our opening exercises and Pledge of Allegiance, if we can ask that everyone bear with us, we're going to try and go a little slower than we ordinarily would, because we are transitioning to Board Docs, which will allow us some efficiency and time-saving, and the board back here is saying, "Not for us." But I'm very proud, and our board is very brave to do this. This is a very common product that's used by school boards around the state and nation. It's going to allow us a lot of options and opportunities expanded. And with that, I'm going to turn this over to the Honorable Brendan Powers.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Ms. Powers. And I'm just going to need to... For those board members, you may want to go back to your feature, where it says Feature at the top of the screen, and then log back in where it's Meetings. So I'll give you a minute for that to happen. That's okay. It's at the top, top middle of the screen. Click Feature, and then click Meetings for today's board meeting. When you do it, they'll give you an option to say, "Join the meeting." And we can join the meeting. If you click on that button there. And then click on that part of that. So the reason we're doing this is because when the board members join, it allows us to have a digital vote. And as we, our board members, as we're learning that, it will actually record our votes and begin instantly building the minutes, so that they'll actually be at the end of the meeting, some interim minutes that will already be done, and saves staff. When we, I'll show you when we come to it. We're going to, there'll be a section here coming up. She, I think she unlocks our votes. Okay. We are going to go to our first vote, which is going to be Item 3A, Adoption of Agenda as Recommended by the Superintendent. I have no changes, or recommendations of changes, on my desk, so if somebody wants to entertain a motion. The motion by Ms. Powers is second by Mr. Dodd to adopt the agenda as recommended by the superintendent. Lisa, will you unlock the votes? And then if we would say yes to vote? Have all of us voted? You showed registered all of us have voted. Congratulations, Board. It passes 5-0, and we have done our first electronic voting. We'll move on to Citizens' Comments. Are there any green cards?
No, sir.
No hanging jets, that's good, Mr. Bradshaw. We'll move on to Educational Services, to Edutenuity Course and Virtual Instruction. Good morning, Mr. Dr. Hebert.
Good morning. I'm bringing my whole notice all on here. It's such a big package, and we're excited.
And I want to thank you. You have done so much work and support behind the scenes to get us to today, and I know you have encouraged us and are trying to help the workloads of all of our district with this particular improvement.
It's a team effort, Ms. Adele, Ms. Androwski, so it's a team effort of working forces. So thank you. I come to the board asking for approval of the Edutenuity Course and Virtual Instruction Service Agreement.
Board members?
I'm with approval.
Second. I'm with motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the Edutenuity Course and Virtual Instruction Service Agreement. Any comments or questions? There being none, could you unlock the votes? All, everyone voted? Ms. Adele, has everyone voted?
Yes.
And can you read the votes, because it's not coming on my screen to show that?
So, Mr. Kennedy, I take it that we're not going to do a verbal vote then?
That's, I think, I think we should still do the verbal vote as we're doing that, because I think, because I still have to call it, and without having, and I need to, I still have to be able to state the vote. So in this case, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Vote passes five to zero.
And then we could, we'll still...
And then we'll still do this, but, right.
And if you're watching on television and you don't have a computer...
And we still have to announce the votes by procedure. So, moving on to Instructional and Support Recommendations.
Good morning. I ask the Board's approval of the Instructional and Support Recommendations as listed on the Golden Rod.
With approval of the Instructional and Support Recommendations as outlined on the Golden Rod?
I have a motion by Ms. Counts, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve Instructional and Support Recommendations. Any questions or comments?
Nice, long list of appointments. And so, thank you for your work.
We had two actually moved from support to instructional, that resigned their support position and moved into teaching positions.
Sometimes the Golden Rod, it'll be always placed, it'll be on here.
I'm assuming we're still going to have the Golden Rod as a physical piece of paper, because it changes, yes, it will be, because it's updated right up until our vote usually.
Yes.
So they'll, they're saying yes.
And then will the document that's on the agenda, then it may not match this final document?
Same as, no, same as it's been, you know, that only is when it's recorded a week, seven days before. So the Golden Rod, that's why they, it's updated on ours with the asterix.
I think if you look on your agenda, it says White Copy on it, when you look at it. It says White Copy.
We update it until the afternoon before the board meeting.
So how will someone who wants to click on that, and see it after the meeting, if it'll be updated then on here after the vote?
I thought we updated it, Lisa. Do we update the Golden Rod when Frame brings it to you the day before, or the morning of?
It still says White Rod on the computer.
Right, as it did on the original, even when we had a, well, didn't say White Rod, but it was, in the original, when we were paper, it was always that White Rod, and then we just hand out to the Golden Rods, and that's what, I mean, I can go in and change it.
Yeah, it needs to be official.
Well, the question I would have for Legal, though, is, are we able to add and change supplemental information, Mr. Bradshaw, on the agenda after the seven-day, within that seven-day period before the meeting, from the time it's released? So, like, this, the original one is put on there, uploaded, say, seven days, and then throughout the week, there's an update. Can that be updated?
As long as it says updating next.
But the agenda, but the agenda items, we cannot at that point, other than for good cause, add any items on there. So other than that, we, we're, so that would, is that the answer?
Yes, and they can update it on here, so what we're voting on, on this, is the same as, as this. Or Lisa, you can update it to the Golden Rod for the meeting on the computer, that's what we should think.
And Mr. Dodd, the other thing, too, is like, items like, that'll be presented today, can also be added after the fact, too, so if there's a presentation that's not ready until the workshop, that can be added. That's part of the thing I'm excited about, that it'll be able to provide, that's not been always as easy to provide with public, that that staff can just kind of go and fill those packages.
Our suggestion's going to be that when we do the White Rod, instead of saying that, just to say, "This document will be updated until the point throughout..."
Okay, and then she can put five of one draft.
In that way, when someone's looking at that, they know that this isn't a final draft until 24 hours.
And that's excellent.
But at the time of the meeting.
Correct.
Hold on one second, Ms. Powers.
On this, there's my individual vision on something else we made, because if I vote before you vote, then does it show up?
It does, but you, we can ask her, I believe you can re-release her vote?
I can, remove the vote.
You can, she can remove it to do it again.
And what I was just thinking about, if I voted on something, not this, but something else, then could everyone see how I voted?
Yes, and I think that, so the question on that, I think procedurally, is, we shouldn't unlock the vote until the Chair calls for the vote.
Online voting.
So that we, so that we don't, so we avoid that very issue. Because inadvertently, you could have that conversation going on, the vote's not been called for, but it was, you know, I'm a box clicker, so I would have done that as well. So with this, is there any other questions or comments? This is good stuff, by the way.
Did this put a ditch in the 40 openings that we had last week?
We have 37, we currently have 37 instructional openings and 18 support openings.
All these people here?
Yes, we still had a few resignations.
And I think, if, correct me if I'm wrong, that we have approximately 10 individuals in the parent, parent-to-teacher.
That is correct. We have 10 this time, and Brendan, do you know, we have three so far, starting in the fall.
So if we took 10 away from, say, 37, we're down to roughly 27.
We could get 10 each semester, 20 a year, that would be excellent.
And that is remarkable. That is just truly remarkable.
We have several, Brendan and I have been going out to the schools, and we have several that do not have their AA degrees, that have taken the parent test, and so they are going to start with CF, we're working with CF, for them to start the, to get their AA degrees and work through that.
Board members, there's an article that I'll share with Ms. Adele, to share out with you all, having to do with other districts that are challenged, just as we are, of finding teachers. We are on par with them, but let me tell you who we're on par with, St. Johns County. I mean, St. Johns County, they're, you know, it's interesting, their average salary right now is $46,000. Citrus County's average on the states, BOE report, is $47,000.
Wow.
So that's, that's the only state report is on average salaries, which is, is just also reflective of the age of your teachers. So that's why Citrus tends to be a little higher on that list, because we have more mature teachers, professionally mature teachers. Mr. Dodd?
So I noticed Daniel Koch is on here twice, obviously, he was taking a reappointment, but then he's also...
Yes, right after the reappointment, yes, he resigned his position.
Which is the best.
What's he doing now?
I believe he's working for Apple, is that correct?
That is correct. He left us?
Yes.
You didn't call me? That's too bad.
We all click. Okay, with that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero, and if you would enter your votes. Maybe that's the way to do it, too, to enter them.
Just clarification, when they do vote, it does not come up until I close it.
Okay.
So you can change your mind. You can change your mind until I close it.
Got it.
And my screen for voting, I'm not...
You know what, it didn't redo it, it voted and it kept it, but it didn't register it until, so I think we'll do this, so here comes the next one.
He's early voting.
Moving on to...
Our relationship with CF will give these people an AA degree.
Correct. We are also working with them on becoming partners as far, as the parent-to-teacher program as well.
Okay.
Absolutely.
If they do offer some four-year program.
That is correct. So we are working with them, once they see the interest, we will complete the process with Mr. Bradshaw's assistance.
Okay. So these people could get their bachelor's?
That is correct, from CF as well as St. Leo, absolutely.
Yes, so they're very interested in the program, because our program is St. Leo.
That is correct.
I know that, I think Brendan and Susan's work on them being able to do that also.
Can they pull up any courses, if they're asters?
I am not aware of that, I, we will ask CF and St. Leo, I'm not aware of anything. I know other universities offer that, so we'll check with them as well. Good question, thank you. The next is affiliation, I ask the Board's approval on the affiliation agreement between the School Board of Citrus County, Florida, and Fordham University. We have one social worker that would like to do her internship with Citrus County.
We approve the affiliation agreement with Fordham University.
A motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the affiliation agreement between the Citrus County School Board of Florida and the Fordham University Social Worker Intern Program. Any questions or comments?
I think I had a question, I'm not working with paper, so I'm not having memory. Talk about saving time. There was a, when we put them through the background checks, there was something in there that, a second one, that they had to pay for their background check and their fingerprinting.
That is correct. When we process interns, if they're going, if they're, if they only need to do 20 hours, we wrapped them through the schools, but if it's an internship, we process them as substitutes, and they do, they do pay for their fingerprinting and drug testing, they can also substitute on the days they do not have an internship.
And you bet.
That is correct.
And then I know that, you know, we fight with our teachers about, you got to pay for this, you got to pay for that, and add this to your certificate, and you got to pay for that, so is there a way that, and this is just a question right now, that we don't have to answer, but can we look at if they actually come onto Citrus County as a teacher, can we give them that money back?
We can look at that.
Do we do it again?
We can certainly, absolutely discuss that.
Whatever they've done as an internship, we don't have to redo it as a teacher?
They don't, as long as they remain a substitute, and they've been processed, they are good to go.
Okay.
As a teacher.
So they don't have break-in service.
That is correct.
They would have to be...
Yeah, and see that...
We, we look at that, we monitor that very closely, and encourage them, we reach out to them, and encourage them, anyone that resigns with us or interns, we encourage them to stay on as substitutes until they are offered a position, so they don't have that break-in service, and have to be refingerprinting.
The cost, though, is simply what we're being charged, there's no, we're not...
That is correct. That is correct.
Out of their pocket, so.
It's the same amount of money that we're being charged in the process of your...
Is there, what we said, something maybe you already have, is, well, let's say, math teachers in elementary, we desperately need, is there a way to find out what colleges are very strong in that?
We, we do do that, and we have started posting, it's called Handshake, and it's a program online where we can post positions, where we can see information about the college, where we have that relationship online. So we are doing that with all of the universities in our area, as well as Pennsylvania and Ohio.
What's exciting about Handshake, because I helped my son with his own internship that way, is if a school, Pennsylvania University, is, somebody's looking down here, and they say Citrus County, it'll say, three people from that university have worked there, or, and so it gives information, so you, you can feel like, oh, they know a little bit about our group and our organization. It's also, gives us a lot of information that gets, you know, about the potential applicant.
Right.
That is excellent. So, I mean, Handshake's, it's an industry standard that's being used, and I think it's a good move.
That's, all the colleges and universities are going to that, we have registered with all the ones in our area, and the, some of the ones that we go to out of state as well, to identify those.
The student actually logs on from their university login, so it's not like they are joining something as much as they, they get to do all that from within their university, and that information gets to go along.
Do you use the information where people study from to super scale?
Yes, we do. We do have that information. We hire a lot from within the state of Florida, but we've also gotten several from out of state as well. A lot, we have our group from Pennsylvania that we hire, Ohio, so we can, we track that information.
And we can certainly write an activation to you at next board meeting, just for your information purposes, where all of our hires came from, by state as we like.
That would be interesting, just then we can, if, a lot are coming from certain states, and you should be clear, and those states give you more, you're having...
Okay. Anything else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And if you can unlock the votes and register your vote.
Thank you.
Moving on, a resolution to affirm participation in the small district consortium, oh, I'm sorry, five to zero, I thought I announced it, I'm sorry. Thank you. Item 7A, a resolution to affirm participation in the small district consortium.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I ask you to approve the resolution affirming the participation in the small district, small school district council consortium.
I'm going to affirm participation in the small school district council consortium.
Second. The motion by Ms. Powers, second by Mr. Dodd, to approve a resolution affirming participation in the small school district council consortium. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Cue.
If you can unlock the votes. And I believe, has anybody voted? We're moving on then to Attorney Legal Matters.
I don't know anything.
Dr. Hebert?
Thank you.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mullin?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dodd?
She's trying to think of something.
Ms. Powers?
Just two things.
You go right ahead.
I asked Lisa to send y'all an email reminding about the IV vote.
Yes.
Coming up, we usually, all of us join as a parent organizations, and you can give a check, you make it out to IV parent organization, and I shall, I probably with a small table, and they very much appreciate it, because anytime there's a meeting, they're on the board, and has school board reports, very pleased. Also, like, the mental health meeting last week, and it was very productive, I was telling a kid, it was from all different branches of government and private industry, to, just sitting there and sharing information about mental health, and each of them, they got a plan that they were going to work on, and bring more maybe sources in, or new ideas, and he had, each of them had an assignment, and it was very realistic, and sometimes you go to these meetings, any kind of meeting, it could be football, or whatever, and you think, what are they talking about? You know, about why are meetings? But this one was, was one in which, hey, this is right, this is good, we were serious, realistic, doing the job we're supposed to be doing, and I was very, very pleased, and we'll have another meeting coming up in a couple of weeks, which I believe will be at the same type of feeling, that this is good, this is wonderful, and very much appreciated that, kid, and I know you're talking to someone back there, but that was a good job.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Ms. counts?
The other thing I want to do is brag on the Chronicle, because they're doing a lot for our educational things, Attorney also got a lot of press for the Marine Science from the Environmental Week, the Environmental Jeopardy! Games for high school and middle school have already been published, and even this weekend dinner in October for Ena Hassen, who's now one of our, so I think we need to say thank you to the Chronicle for making all those, those notices for the general public, so.
And I believe Marine Science Station is even working with, is it Enoch City, is that recently?
Enoch City.
That. To, to even do some trips to the Marine Science Station, so I think that's wonderful. I have a couple of things, one, I want to talk about Board Docs, because there's a couple of pieces that we need to talk about, and may make some decisions on. One, and I know the board, you understand this, because you've been wonderful in approving this, but for those maybe that need to understand, the reason we're doing this is not to make the board members' lives easier, because as, as they will often contest to, this is, we are actually, we tend to operate pretty promptly in our board meetings, so this is going to take a little bit of learning. But the reason we're doing this is because largely the process of building an agenda and getting an item on the agenda hasn't changed in probably the last 20 years. And it was, because 20 years ago, we had, it was more labor-intensive, we don't have people anymore, and so we needed to have a very efficient system that had a lot of checks and balances, but that was in the most, handled in the most prompt manner. So this is where Board Docs has come out of, and so what we're doing, and the decisions we're trying to make, to make this very workable, have to do with what happens before the agenda gets to us. With that said, one of the things, the easy one, is I wondered if maybe we could add to the opening exercises, the board member who will be responsible for those, and that may just be an extra reminder for us, that, you know, that we could just, who's going to be doing it? The biggest thing... The biggest thing has to do with the consent agenda. Today, we did not have a consent agenda because it was a special board meeting and so the agenda is the agenda. But of course, like many boards, consent agendas are how we can operate a number of items that we all agree to and we can agree to in one vote. The way we have done consent agendas in the past, everything went on the agenda and then with the automatic polls and then any polls the board members made, everything else then went on the consent agenda. That, the overall philosophy won't change, but the system does it differently. It really is more conducive to the automatic polls being assigned to the agenda automatically at the beginning. So in other words, if we would always have the budget voted on, an amendment to the budget voted on, that's an automatic poll. It would go on the permanent agenda. And then everything else would go on the consent agenda. And then the board member would ask to pull an item off of the consent agenda. So otherwise, and the reason is because the way Board Docs builds it, it assumes the bulk of the agenda goes on consent. Otherwise, when she has it, she has to, in order to move it to the main agenda, she has to click on every item and add it to the main agenda. That's a lot easier to take the items we pulled than it is to take the reverse of what we do now, which is to take the entire agenda and basically make it a consent. This way, it's a consent until it's made to the agenda. Am I making sense at all?
Yes, but my question there would be, what is going to be the appearance to the general public? That everything is always on consent? I would rather.
Most of the boards, that's how it, that's how they do it. It actually is that we've just never done it that way because it didn't make any difference. Because all she did is cut and paste. The process now is different.
But Doug is correct. Before, you asked me that everything listed. So if I, as a public member, pulled it, I thought, my gosh, 40 items are going to deal with it. That's what it is on there until we pull it to the consent agenda.
It's kind of the opposite, isn't it? We should be pulling it and putting it on the consent is what we're doing actually. And they're all agenda items. I mean, how much extra time does it take to move them? Is this like an hour or five minutes or how long would it take?
Well, I honestly can't answer that because I haven't done it yet. Very honestly, I haven't had the need to do that. I mean, to move things, it just depends. What I've seen other counties do is that they have a blurb, you know, a little blurb about what the consent agenda is and how they are all voted on. Because next to the, if you would go back and look at your agenda, next to them, it would say, it would say actually consent on it as far as actual consent. And so then, I mean, I can move them. It's not an issue. It's just.
And here's one of the, and I told you because I thought the same thing. So here's one of the things though that is hard to see without entirely seeing it. When you, if I'm a member of the public and I go and see the agenda the day it's published and made live, seven days before. If we don't do, put everything on the consent other than the automatic polls, if I go back to the agenda for today, or even as a board member, if we go back, now when she puts it, it's all over the place. Because now it goes back into its original, what would have been its original place. So instead of saying, now where was that? Well, it would have been in consent and that was pulled on to the item. So now it's very obvious we're going to have it for discussion. If you were looking at it as a member of the public, everything's on consent, but you actually know it's on consent. You wouldn't entirely, the other way, everything moves to consent, but you, if you said, okay, what was that item they were going to vote on that I had an issue with? You'd have to go and search for it under consent and it would be nowhere where it had initially been. So it actually, it actually becomes more difficult to find the item when you do it from putting it on the agenda and then putting it into consent. Because it actually gets kind of more buried in it.
I am kind of lost on that.
That's okay. So when you look at the agenda now and the item numbers, and if we were on, so if you looked at like 10A, if for some reason 10A became a consent item, it would now go into consent. And it would be, it would not, it would not be typically 10A, it would be 10A on consent. So you do have to look for a different area. So if you were looking for the agenda item, it's going to be in a different place at the board meeting than it will on the agenda, on the original agenda. At least when we looked at it, that's what we found.
There, well, there's, I've done some research and there are some that have it all. They'll have like finance, Mike Mullin, and then it'll say consent. And you can keep them all under that. But you would have two different, yeah, it's just.
Well, I just, I want the perception with me that, you know, we may, if nobody wants to discuss it, it goes on consent. Now, if we do it this other way, which I understand, if it's all on consent and then we pull it, then it should show who pulled it. Now, I know, I've seen the, I believe it's the county commission, it shows who pulls an item for discussion. So we have their name by it. So is that what's going to happen here?
Of that, I have not seen that.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think Board Docs, they don't use Board Docs. They use a different product.
So, but will it show who pulls the item and at what time? If, so if it's all on consent and I want to pull an item and I go in there and pull it, are all of you going to be able to see that I pulled it? Or am I going to see if Sandy pulled something prior to the meeting or?
Usually the chair is informed when somebody pulls something. Anyway, at least that's been our practice for years.
When we had the hard copies, you know, it didn't say who made, who pulled those particular items. The other way that we could do it is, and I spoke with Mr. Bradshaw, was to keep it as it is, you know, and then I can make a category. If you notice the black, I'm not sure how you see it, but the, those are the categories like finance, you know, to any other. I can make a category that says consent agenda. And that can be, I can move things all up into that consent agenda category. And then the next item would be to approve the consent agenda. Is that right? That's right, yes. So we can do it that way and see if that works for the next meeting.
It's kind of like the agendas are now.
Yes, it was the process that I think the concern was the amount of work on it.
For the September 10th board meeting.
Okay, well, let's do that then.
And then what about the time, you're moving to time when we receive the agenda? What is the timeframe for an item to be pulled off consent?
It would be the same. You have the day before the meeting, so then that Monday until noon. So once I know that everything else that goes on consent, I can change that to a consent action and then move those up. And then just the items that were pulled will show under the other categories as they do, as our original paper agenda.
Yep. So, and Mr. Kennedy, I mean, I'm excited about this.
No, and Mr. Dodd, you've been a big help with this. So I, and I, I'm struggling with that same thing. So I totally get it. I just, it's this balance of this. How do we, we keep the traditions and the transparency that we have? And then mirror it. And it's, it's a work in progress. So I've.
And now, and since you brought up the Board Docs, so when the request for school board agenda items that staff fills out, it's going to be consistent, which I'm very, I'm glad about that. But is there some training or, I mean, what's going on in that area?
Dr. Hebert, do you want to maybe? Because I think it's been exciting what you've been doing behind the scenes. I mean, just look at Mr. Mullin and Mr. Bishop. They're, you know, I see tablets and laptops and.
Ongoing, ongoing training. We did provide training to staff. And Ms. Adele did create a PowerPoint with directions for staff when they're filling out all the information and what to do. And then Ms. Adele has met with individual folks that need support in how to go about the process. So we've had ongoing conversations with staff, Mr. Dodd, on how to do this. And we really haven't had, I mean, I've got staff here that has gone through and actually worked through the process very well.
So if someone inadvertently leaves out the financial implications, somebody's going to catch that before it gets posted to the board, right?
I'm going to give an example. We have our student progression plan. I'm going to excuse Mrs. Kayler for this, that was submitted to Mrs. Kayler. She had a chance to review it. When she looked at it, she realized there were some things not correct in it. So she, what we did, rejected it, which is electronic button. She rejected it, got sent back to the secretary. The secretary, Ms. Bodecker, then went and made some changes and adjustments, then resubmitted to Mrs. Kayler. Then it ended up coming to me and then it went to Ms. Wilson and then up the chain. And you can follow, like I can see, I saw that it was rejected. Now, it doesn't say why, like what the issue was, but you can see the, kind of the chain of how it works. So it's actually been great. Ms. Adele's able to say, listen, I see some items are sitting here. And so she can call that person, say, listen, we're waiting on a few items to be processed for the board meeting and then kind of help align them. But emails are sent, so when somebody sends a board agenda request, I get an email saying, go into Board Docs and do that. So it's been very seamless.
And there is still an approval, like someone signs off on these.
Yes. It's, in the past, we used a system where you had to drag a signature over and drop it on and then save that document and then re-mail it back. Here, you go in, you review it, and then there's a box. You just click on this box and check marks. But then at the bottom, it'll say approved by Scott Hebert. So you'll be able to see who then approved it. But it won't go any further from me until I do that. And then when it gets to Mrs. Wilson and she looks at the financial impact she sent, approves it, and then it goes to Lisa. So you can see all the steps along the way of who's approved it and reviewed it.
It is exciting. The other piece that is being worked on is going to be the policy piece. Because right now, it's difficult to sometimes search our own policies. And the other aspect is if. Yes, Mr. Bradshaw had a few choice words on that. And I think we all recognize that with Board Docs, that part will be improved. Also, when we're developing new policies, we have then the ability, of course, to search and find out what other districts are doing, not just in Florida, but around the country. And that helps us, I think, build better policies. So that's, we've been hoping that Florida School Board Association would have a policy bank. And this is really the next best thing, if not even better than that. So.
And Mr. Dixon is working on the policy right now. He and his staff are working through that because they have to work with Board Docs to get everything converted into their format. And then as Mr. Kennedy said, then it would be much easier to navigate and search. If you want to look for a piece of policy, type it in and be able to quickly find what you need, which is much easier than our current policy manual.
And this program's going to better serve the public because they're going to be able to go online and click on a item number. And actually, this will work out where they'll be able to click on it and it'll come up to the video. Isn't that why we're timing the video?
The video, I'm not sure that we're to that point yet. But one thing like right now, if somebody tuned into the video and wanted to know where we were in the meeting, they can go to the scoreboard piece and it'll tell them we're right now at item A, other business. And they would know what part of the meeting they're on. Previous to that day, they did not have that. The timestamping is another piece of it and that has to do with audio visual.
We have to work on some equipment upgrades and video upgrades. And then, once that happens, when the meeting is closed, Ms. Adele will be able to go in and put the timestamps and then be able to follow that. But I will say with the board policy, to go back to that piece, the nice, once you all, we get into some board policies, they'll be able to track it. So let's say someone looks up a board policy. They can say, here's what Citrus County did. And on this date, they discussed it. On this date, they approved it. Here's when it went into packs. And you'll be able to follow that from this point forward. We're not going backwards. We're just going to go from this point forward. But it'll, it has some great robust qualities. But I'm excited the piece we're able to get moving on it today. So I think it's been very positive.
And we're going to be doing student progression plan. That's another piece of that. That'll be able to go into it as well. And again, that's, I think, is going to just continue to improve.
Mrs. Kayler and I have already been talking about how the student progression plan will be part of the Board Docs process. So she's very eager to work with that and make that a part of how we move forward this coming year. Again, not what we've done, but starting this new school year.
Thank you.
On the consent agenda, when we have the donations that we have, do you always read out, even if they're donations? You're still going to?
Yes, and that's actually, it's online items. Because I completely agree with Powers. The other thing I just want to go over briefly with you is reminder that, of a couple of meetings. One is on September 12th, Florida School Board Association has their Legislative Committee Platform Meeting. I unfortunately have a prior engagement and am not able to attend. And Ms. Powers, who is our alternate, has so graciously, she changed her schedule so that she could represent us. Following the incident at IPS, I had immediately contacted the Florida School Board Association about adding to the platform, an effort similar to what Mr. Dodd has, is looking at with. Yeah, thank you. The issue, and I don't know how specifically how you all are doing it, but on our platform, what was suggested, the language, is that, that in Florida statute 863.10, that it's added to include for a person to express publicly a verbal threat to conduct a mass shooting or act of terrorism. I'm sure there'll be somebody who will still wordsmith us, but I think that's the essence, I think, of what we're talking about. I think, Mr. Dodd, that was similar to what you had indicated as well as that, so that there was more indication of that. Does that look correct?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's the contention there, that verbal threats are just as serious as a written or electronically communicated threat. And we take them just as serious. But it's more than just saying, oh, we can document it in a report and then call the school that we've had this verbal threat shoot up the school. And then the decision that we make is to notify everyone. What are we doing? Well, no trespass to the person. Okay, what else? Well, that's it right now. So those are, at least it'll give an option. At least there'll be the ability to make a criminal case, to take a criminal action. And that's what I think that the commission, I hope, I mean, is going to be in discussion. There have been several other incidents and we look at these postings or leaving a note here or passing a note and it's written and it's a felony. And yet, when someone makes a verbal threat, commit a mass homicide or.
To a law enforcement officer.
Criminal threat, then there needs to be the option for criminal action.
I agree. I was very excited that the Florida School Board Association's feedback that I'm hearing was extremely positive. They immediately wanted to work with us to add that because it was an after platform request. But they accommodated us on that and so that is moving forward. The other things that we've talked about is trying to provide more opportunities for career technical education with regards to alternatives to our state standardized testing. And so I provided some of the information to that, to FSBA in that. Following that adoption, what will happen is that typically will be adopted by the committee that day. It is a process very similar to a legislative type process. The committee will meet, there will be voting that takes place, there'll be amendments that are offered. And then the platform is established. And then that platform is what is sent to the board directors for final approval.
And that's the meeting that Ms. Powers is going to go to?
Ms. Powers will go to the platform development meeting.
Where is that going to be? In Orlando or is that going to be Tallahassee?
It's actually Kissimmee, I mean Orlando, Kissimmee. The, our current FSBA president, it'll be at. So they tend to do it there.
Is it Osceola?
Osceola, yeah. I forget, Osceola is, I mean, Kissimmee is Osceola. I think it's Orlando or. Or Orange County, that's right. So that will take place. And then on September 23rd, and I was going to get with the superintendent on this, we have the Citrus Legislative Delegation Session. And where again, I thought we would, we have time at our next board meeting. But I think those are some items where this particular item should also be included in our list of items that we publicly ask for from our legislators for there to be the addition of that. I think both have expressed a desire to improve that legislation of a verbal threat. So I think that's something we should look to if we're all in agreement to add as well.
Doug, I asked you, if falling under that doesn't come, say, a ginger drop, so her person says she's going to just kill it. That, you know, like we've always said our whole life, I could just shoot that. That doesn't come under, that's to be. That doesn't come under, it has to be a serious verbal threat.
There's something here, I'm really looking real quick to, to add. There is a proposal that I am encouraged about, that, that's also being put forward on FSBA. It is to amend Florida Statute 1003.621, to say, to enable any school district, rather than only academically high-performing school districts, to be eligible for flexibility in meeting certain requirements in Florida Statute and the rules of public education, and the rules of the State Board of Education. This is an effort over Florida School Board Association to say, why can't we appeal to the state to have opportunities that, for example, charter schools may have? So, for example, there are requirements that we're dealing with right now, that our staff are required to do, that the charters may be exempt from. And that may allow them an opportunity to spend more time with students, or to, to accomplish different things. This isn't a carte blanche. We would have to come up with a plan to say, okay, if we did or didn't do X, we would be able to achieve X. And then they would have to approve that plan, the State Board of Education. But Florida School Board Association's position is, let's give our traditional public schools some opportunities to be successful by providing some creative ways of operating. And I think it's, it's a very appropriate approach, and the idea is to try and provide us some of the flexibilities that, that charters may have. One of the things FSBA is careful to sometimes say is, be careful what we wish for. Because sometimes it sounds, oh, well, that's great, you don't have to do that. Well, maybe we do feel we need to do one. Or maybe they're, that them doing that also puts a burden on them that we, we are exempt from. So it is that, be careful what you wish for. So I don't know if you have any thoughts for that, but I wanted to share that with you, because that's kind of out there. With that, I don't have anything more. What we need to go, Mr. Dodd?
Yes, and I just was thinking about this, so that we can be trained back to the Board Docs. Like, if we have an area to make comments, because right now, you know, I turn all my stuff in after the meeting, so how are we going to work that with notes, or with, if we do make some questions that we can come back and reference it? There's a, there's an ability to type in our notes now, correct?
There's a note area there. There's two things, though. You'll see, there's a little, like, cloud button, so you can make an annotation on that.
So I can make an annotation here. Now, is this, does this become public record on my annotation, or not? No. It's, it's got to be requested.
Mr. Bradshaw, isn't that still somewhat up for debate?
Well, you can type on it and print it out.
If he makes a personal note regarding something, that's, I know, been argued at...
There's, there's a whole bunch of cases on public records and personal notes. If you're making personal notes that are only for your, you like to remind you of things, that is not a public record.
Okay.
You know, but if you transmit that to other people, then it becomes a public record. Does that make sense?
Yes, so if I were to make a note to, make sure I check on this, but when I type it in here, do people have access to it, or is it just me?
That I don't know.
No, there's no, nobody can see that, but you do have the option to print it if you want to reprint it.
Okay, but I can come back to it and reference it.
Correct. Until you delete it, it's there.
Now, there's a, a second piece to that, though, Mr. Dodd. If you, for example, download one of the PDF supplemental pieces, and, and I do this regularly, where I will highlight and make notes within Adobe Editor, I save those. Now, whether it, I mean, I know if I got requested, I'd still be calling Mr. Bradshaw, but my intent is usually that it's still questionable that, that, that could be a public record, because it's, it's, I've created that.
Well, generally, that's not going to be a public record if you don't share.
But I'm going to say, if it's a note where I say, bring up to the Board this, it...
That's probably not a public record. But if you write down, but if you write down something that, and then, you know, a note that says, Lisa, please make sure that this gets done or reviewed, or whatever, that is, that is a public record, because you're, because if you're going to, if you're transmitting that, or you have Lisa the document of that in it, then that probably becomes a public record. But if you make a note that says, I need to ask Lisa to do this, or I need to talk to, you know, Mr. Dodd, whoever about this, it gets clarification, that's generally a public record.
Okay.
Because your personal notes are not a public record.
Mr. Dodd, does that help?
Right, so...
Those are the, kind of like, that's the, you know, there's a bunch of law on that as far as when they become public records and when they don't become public records.
Generally, it's associated with becoming public when you start sharing that information.
But if one of us, at the end of the meeting, either emails to Lisa, or says, here, take this, now it's valid, will be created as a public record. At least that's mine, that was mine.
And so if I make an annotation here on this item, and then I want to come back, will I be able to find those notes later, or what do I...
If you make an annotation there, and you save it, and you'll see, if you pull it up...
Close, do or print?
Just hit the, there's a little check mark?
Yes.
You'll hit that check mark, and that will save it?
Okay.
And it will turn yellow.
Okay.
The little cloud will turn yellow. So then, when you go to that particular category or item, it will be yellow, and you'll know that you have a note there.
So like, Mr. Kennedy, if we're going over this, and we want to make sure we cover that on this agenda item, we'll do that, and it will highlight and show that we made a note?
So you just have to open that up?
Okay.
And you can see what your note is, and then if you're through with it, you can, there's a, you can delete it.
Yeah, and that's what I was just doing with these as well.
Okay, that's good, I like that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Now, the part I hate to do there, everybody, but we have to call a executive or a closed session.
We're going to adjourn.
We're going to adjourn.
And then we're going to call an executive session.
So we're going to adjourn, and we are calling an executive session, so that means only, it's going to be bargaining, will be able to remain in the room. And I don't believe, they said this is going to be very long. So we will adjourn, and if you would turn off your microphone...